Let's call the meeting to order please, City of Washington Common Council Meeting, January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. First thing, let's have a moment of silence for our veterans, please. Okay, thank you.
Pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
May we have real call, please?
Councilman Lutzberg?
Here.
Councilman Brown?
Here.
Councilman Gress?
Here.
Councilman McHampton?
Here.
Councilman Emmens?
Here.
Councilman Dahl?
Here.
Councilman Showalter?
Here.
Okay, very good. Uh, first thing here, we got approval of the minutes of the January ninth regular meeting, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting in front of you tonight. Anybody have any comments, concerns about the minutes presented?
I like the real game.
Yeah, Councilman Gress makes a motion to approve the minutes. Councilman Brown, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Now, next, we got, um, presentation of the claims tonight. It's, you know, there's a couple of things in there that made it a little higher than normal, of course. EMTO and, and then we do have that, um, in there for approval of the hundred and seventy for Christians in there, too. But other than that, um, I didn't see anything that really stood out, uh.
That seemed more ElectraCom was doing boring on the highway project, is that pretty much?
Yeah, um.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's who, uh, Bill Castren was in with.
Yeah.
Uh, that's who we went with through them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess subcontracting through them.
So is the seventy thousand for the majority of it, or they still got a little?
That was from Circle K to two fifty-seven.
Okay.
We think that one was so, was so much higher, we thought it was pretty high, but it was, uh, hurry it in, like hurry it up now, get somebody to get it in. This, the other, the one that's doing from two fifty-seven east is a mill drill. It's another, uh, going out there, recommended that they were using a pre-deal, but, uh, their per foot price was a lot cheaper than what ElectraCom was, so.
Well, at least they're looking, trying to get deals.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they should have most of this, you know, the goal is to get it done, get all this, um, utility work done before the spring and then, uh, then the roadwork will start. I did, real quick, I did get a message from, um, bids are still posted about February tenth.
We're working.
Yeah, so we was talking about highway, I just thought I'd throw that in there real quick. Any other questions on the, um, claims that we have today?
I make a motion that we move them on to the board of work.
Okay, Councilman Emmens makes a motion to approve and send to the board of work for final approval?
Second.
Second by Councilman, uh, Hampton, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Abstained?
Abstained, okay, thank you. All right, uh, resolutions, we have one, reading of resolution four dash twenty-two three.
I'll make a motion to read that resolution.
Okay, Councilman Hampton makes a motion to read this resolution.
I'll second that.
Second, uh, Councilman Dahl, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Resolution number four dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a funding and development agreement between the Davis County Economic Development Foundation and the City of Washington in regard to the Washington Commons Project. Whereas the common, whereas the Washington Common Council has previously entered into an agreement with the Davis County Economic Development Foundation, Inc., to develop a plan for the funding and construction of the Washington Commons Project to be in downtown Washington, and whereas the parties desire to document their understanding and agreement as to each party's responsibilities for the funding and construction of the project as well as ultimate ownership, and whereas the council has received a proposed funding and development agreement between the foundation and the city and the council is in agreement with the terms therein, now therefore be resolved that the council approves said agreement and directs and authorizes Mayor David Rhodes to execute the agreement of the parties on behalf of the city. This resolution shall take full force and effect upon approval, passed and adopted by the Common Council of the City of Washington, Indiana, this twenty-third day of two thousand twenty-three, of January two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay. Lieutenant Barrett Nehoff, a few words on this matter?
Yeah, so, um, as Tim said there, essentially what you're doing is authorizing, correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, authorizing the mayor, uh, to, to move forward with an agreement that basically, um, that agreement spells out, um, essentially codifying what you all decided at the meeting, uh, at your last meeting, right? So therefore, we're delegating that construction back to the city, uh, because the Economic Development Foundation is technically borrowing the funds for the project, we have to, um, enter into the contract with Tabor Owens Construction. Um, so following the meeting, your last city council meeting, uh, myself, the mayor and David Dahl, all got together, uh, and talked, Allen was there as well, um, Tim was there, and then the foundation, the attorney, we basically just worked through what the city's responsibilities are, what the foundation's responsibilities are, and how all of that works. We also reviewed the construction contract with Tabor Owens, and then that following Tuesday, here and myself met with Jeff to talk about that. So basically, what you're approving today is, is, uh, for the city to move forward, um, with the setup that we enter into the bound, the contract, we designate the city as, with the contract between us and Tabor Owens refers to as the, uh, owner's representative essentially, and then basically allows the city to bring on any administrative needs that they, right? Uh, whether it's, uh, construction management firm, whoever it may be, uh, maybe utilizing some of these city's existing resources or a combination thereof, uh, to make sure that the city can do it accordingly. Um, that's essentially what it is, and then it just memorializes what the funding breakdown is between, uh, the city, the foundation, and our other funding partners. So, David, mayor, I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
No, it's pretty well, and breakdown of money, it's still four hundred thousand per, a year, but on the second year goes in effect because of revolving plan, it gets broken down twice, a payment of twice a year instead of once a year. Um, that was gonna help us distribute that money easier, um, through the clerk's office, but, um, yeah. David, do you have anything?
As far as the development agreement draft is wrapped in that, and we've got a copy that's circulating, is that right, or?
Yes, yeah, so I think he sent the latest draft Thursday afternoon around five o'clock, is that something right, Tim?
Yeah. I'm there.
Yeah, and basically, David, it takes a lot of what you pulled together, I think, in your initial draft, and then it just adds to that some additional language. So, it's everything we had talked about, just set up to where the mayor can sign that, and then.
Copy you got?
I, I have not seen a copy of the development agreement.
Oh. He's talking about the?
The one, the one where we, where we become resident project rep, or the inspector. Not seen that.
Yeah, and we did have, on that Tuesday, we did have a good conversation with Jeff about that and his thoughts about, you know, what he, and he gave us some really good points that, um, I think would be beneficial moving forward.
Yeah, he, he was, we talked to him a little bit about, you know, and obviously that you're getting into, basically what the checks and balances need to be, right? And, and he gave some good insight, you know, talking with the mayor about, okay, with your existing resources, you can do some of this. Yeah, these are other things where you probably want to bring in some outside help, you know?
So, um. So.
I did notice, Tim, in that latest draft, I was actually looking at it just, um, this afternoon, there were a few typos just from, from our end, not yours, from our end, um, in terms of the commitments. I think, uh, his first savings bank is who we're taking the loan out through, obviously, but then the other partners, funding partners, uh, you know, we, we need to make a few changes to, but the numbers are all there, so.
Okay. Any other questions on this resolution?
I move we approve it.
Okay, Councilman Dahl makes a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll second it.
Councilman Gress, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. All right, uh, next we move into ordinances, uh, final reading of ordinance number one dash twenty-two three.
I'll make a motion to read that ordinance.
Okay, Councilman Hampton makes a motion to read this ordinance by, um, title only?
Second.
Second by Councilman Brown, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance number one dash two thousand and twenty-three and ordinance amending section one fifteen point zero one of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Washington, Indiana.
And there was one correction we made on the, in the year, at one time, that said January first, two thousand and twenty-two, and we made that correction that say two thousand and twenty-three. But other than that, um, any other questions on this?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Councilman Hampton makes a motion to approve. Councilman Emmens, seconds, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
You have real call vote, yes.
Councilman Lutzberg?
Aye.
Councilman Brown?
Aye.
And Gress?
Aye.
Councilman Hampton?
Aye.
Councilman Emmens?
Aye.
Councilman Dahl?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Okay, that, um, ordinance will be, that be approved. Uh, next we have a introduction of ordinance two dash two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to read that ordinance.
Okay, uh, Councilman Hampton makes a motion to, uh, to read this ordinance. Councilman Showalter, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance number two dash two thousand and twenty-three and ordinance amending compensation ordinance number twenty-four dash two thousand and twenty-two of the City of Washington, Indiana, for the year two thousand and twenty-three. Whereas the two thousand and twenty-three compensation ordinance of the City of Washington, Indiana, namely ordinance number twenty-four dash two thousand and twenty-two, was passed September twelve, two thousand and twenty-two, and whereas it has become utility funds, the utility office, be it ordained by the common council of the City of Washington, Indiana, that the above mentioned ordinance number twenty-four dash two thousand and twenty-two be amended as follows. Section one, that non-taxing department from utility funds of ordinance number twenty-four dash two thousand and twenty-two shall be amended as follows. Non-taxing departments from utility funds, utility office, one part-time clerk at sixteen dollars per hour. Section two, all other positions and amounts delineated in ordinance number twenty-four dash two thousand and twenty-two shall remain the same. Section three, the Washington Code of Ordinances is hereby amended in conformity with the terms of this ordinance. Section four, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon passage by the common council of the City of Washington. All other provisions of ordinance number twenty-four dash two thousand and twenty-two shall remain in effect, passed by the common council of the City of Washington, Davis County, Indiana, this blank, day of blank, two thousand and twenty-three.
So is that a new position or just a raise?
It's, no, it's say, we had that position, it's just moving it from twelve thirty-five to sixteen. Um, we're gonna hire someone in that position for the time being, and I could let, go ahead, Stacy.
Um, I actually have, um, a person retiring at the end of April, so that would, part-time position would become a full-time position in May, and so that pay would just go into a regular clerk's pay.
And we have some, twelve thirty-five is what we pay, um, summer help, and we've corrected some part-time help on other, um, departments, on other salary ordinances, um, we've corrected to sixteen. Um, a lot of our part-time people is sixteen dollars.
Another administrative office, their part-time, I think they have anyone in their part-time now, but their part-time person is sixteen dollars.
So, yeah.
So I'm just asking it to be comparable to that office.
And then once that employee retires, this part-time person's gonna move into that slot, but they're gonna be able to train in the meantime till that person get ready, gets ready to retire in April.
So will this be a position after they move over that you'll just use as needed, or are we?
As needed, it's just been in the ordinance as needed for years, so.
Yeah, it's just sit there?
Yeah, I don't see that we would need that person afterwards, and actually the, the position that they'll be filling, um, the pay will actually decrease from the position it is now to a clerk's pay, so.
Okay.
And I'm ready to hire that person immediately, so if you would suspend the rules tonight and do a final reading, that would be great, if not, I understand.
Yeah, she would like that if we.
Well, I can make a motion to suspend the rules.
Yeah, Councilman Hampton makes a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Second by Councilman, um, Lunsford, yes, um, real call vote.
Councilman Lutzberg?
Aye.
Councilman Brown?
Aye.
Councilman Gress?
Aye.
Councilman Hampton?
Aye.
Councilman Emmens?
Aye.
Councilman Dahl?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
So therefore, I would like, do we need to read it? No, okay, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve.
Okay, yeah.
Read by title only.
Yeah, Councilman Hampton makes a motion to read it for the second reading by title only. Second, by Councilman Showalter, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? All right, Tim?
Ordinance number two dash two thousand and twenty-three and ordinance amending compensation ordinance number twenty-four dash two thousand and twenty-two of the City of Washington, Indiana, for the year two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the ordinance?
I still move.
Councilman Hampton makes a motion to approve.
Second.
By Councilman, um, Lunsford, real call vote, please.
Councilman Lunsford?
Aye.
Councilman Brown?
Aye.
And Gress?
Aye.
Councilman Hampton?
Aye.
Councilman Emmens?
Aye.
Councilman Dahl?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, that ordinance will be in full force. Uh, the last one we have is ordinance number three dash twenty-two three.
I will make a motion to read that.
Councilman Hampton makes a motion to read this ordinance? Second by Councilman Brown, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance number three dash two thousand and twenty-three and ordinance amending section fifty-two A point thirty-four, paragraph B of the City of Washington Code of Ordinances, whereas the Washington Common Council has determined that an error exists in section fifty-two A point thirty-four, paragraph B of the Washington Code of Ordinances, and whereas the additional charges for treating stronger than normal domestic waste for industrial users should read as follows. Industrial users suspended solids three hundred milligram per liter, twelve cents per pound, DOD three hundred milligram per liter at twelve cents per pound, and TKN thirty-five milligram per liter, eighty-four cents per pound. Now therefore be it ordained that the chart contained in section fifty-four A point thirty-four, paragraph B shall be amended to read as stated above. This ordinance shall take full force and effect immediately upon passage passed by the Washington Common Council on the blank day of blank, two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay, any questions regarding?
Did you make the point that we, they were already paying this amount, we just had written wrong?
They, no, um, we have two vendors that's paying this amount at the time, which brings their solids to us, but Purdue is not paying us this amount right now. Uh, at one time they did, and then they called us out on it, and then now that they've been getting, uh, point zero one two.
Well, I thought, I thought that's what.
Yeah. So we had two vendors, and then, um, and this way, uh, it's gonna, everybody should, all, um, this charge should be the same.
Did you talk to Purdue yet?
We have a meeting Friday. Uh, we've got a meeting to go out and talk to them Friday.
Do you have an estimate of a monthly cost?
No, not really, um, no.
I can get that together.
You don't have, I just talked.
I mean, it's gonna be, you know, last, month of December, they paid us, uh, for the month, they paid us four hundred and sixty dollars. And we have two vendors that averages about twelve hundred. So most likely, you know, it.
It's gonna be right around.
The same discharge, it'd probably be higher than that, it'd probably be three or four. I don't, I just guessing, don't know, just depends on the poundage and the discharge. But, yeah, but this ordinance was created back in, um, two thousand and seven.
But it wasn't a typo, it, it was actually the ordinance?
Well, it was, it had to be a typo because back, farther back in the ordinance, it was right.
It makes reference to twelve cents, I think, yeah.
And then, um, up front there, I, I just happened to be working on those, um, contracts and, um, saw that, and, but I asked, I had to reach out and ask, I think David, if my reading is right, because, uh, I thought, wow, maybe it's me, and, uh. Any other questions? I mean, we could have a second reading, I mean, we, I'd like to get this corrected as soon as possible, um.
Make a motion to suspend the rules on this one, too.
And I'd like to do, that way we could talk to them about starting February, you want to wait?
I, I mean, you guys want to do it, you make a motion, he can say it, but I think, uh, they, they, they should have the right to complain.
Okay, we'll, we'll hold it.
I mean, with the raising of the wages, there was nothing, but, you know, whether, may not do them a bit of good, but that is the way things are supposed.
Exactly. I'll, I'll do the meeting Friday, and I'll report back to you at the next meeting, and then this'll come up for adoption at the next council meeting. Okay, very good. That's what we'll do on it. Um, other business, we, just regarding to other business, we, we tabled that for a later time on the, uh, playground equipment, and that's all that's on the agenda tonight. Anybody in the audience got anything for the council tonight that's? Okay, here and now. Councilman Gess, you got anything for us tonight?
Not tonight.
Councilman Dahl?
I do not.
Councilman Showalter?
Nope.
Councilman Brown?
Um, I just, one thing, the, the salary or retention committee didn't meet.
Yes.
So we started that discussion and tried to, um, have a few things that were brought up in the last budget. We discussed those, and we're kind of trying to move forward to get those discussions and try to get a plan together to try to see what we can do, um, and especially try to get stuff done before we get into budget time this time and stay that, hopefully we get all those requests in before then, so I think the mayor's gonna try to put out a plea for that.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I was gonna tell, uh, the department heads, the next, anybody that's got any, um, salary changes other than, you know, just a regular raise, uh, to get those to me, and I was gonna say that the next, um, department head meeting. We got another meeting scheduled for March tenth, so we'll have another meeting on, but I need those requests, if I haven't already got them, I need those requests, but I'll pass that out to the departments on, uh.
And then also, you know, like any, any other ideas that you think might help retain team employees in your department or something, just, not saying that, just, we just need all the information so we can try to look at.
Look at, yeah. Okay. Okay.
Did you guys say you did meet?
Yes.
I didn't get an email on that.
Well, we have.
You run the salary?
On the retention committee, yeah. Anita and I was both put on that.
We had three councilmen there, be there, so I don't know.
Yeah, okay, we're looking to see, I mean.
I was surprised you wasn't there. We were both on the original email asking us to be on the committee.
Okay.
Yeah, you couldn't have that, man?
No, we couldn't have, yeah.
So the, how many of us got the original email from the mayor?
Well, I don't know, I had to go back and look, I had a list, and I, I used that list this time I thought, and on my desk, and I, so I might have made a mistake with that, but I'll look at and see. Get back with you. Okay, anything else?
I saw you.
Okay, Tim, got anything?
No, I don't.
Councilman Hampton?
No, sir.
Councilman Emmens?
Uh, yeah, how did we do with fuel for the year? Did we, say in range, everybody?
Well.
Or did we have trouble?
We didn't, uh, have any, don't any encumbrances, it's just the normal encumbrances for the month of December, you know, that's all we can do. Um, our, our consumption was up altogether with all the departments, was up about a hundred and ten thousand dollars from the year before, because, so that reflected some raises and, you know, stuff like that, but, uh.
We were worried about it all year, where it was on a.
Yeah, everybody did well, we was able to, um, you know.
Transferred some money around.
Yeah.
To make it happen.
But we didn't, uh, I, I was watching that closely, but, um, yeah, we did use more than, uh, twenty twenty-one. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Lunsford?
Um, I've just had more people reach out, um, about insurance, city insurance. We told them we would look into that at the beginning of the year and.
And we have been looking, uh, talking to, best talk to some insurance, uh, related, uh, our care agents, and we have talked out there, um, we are gonna put, get that committed together, talk about that probably February. Um, we're, we're gathering some information now, um, Thompson's has gathered some information for us to get some packets made up, get the packets out to us, so we can, if you got anything else, you've been talking to him more than I have.
Um, the only thing I've done is just told Veron that we were gonna, we were gonna do this, and she needed, I sort of get the packets ready, and I believe you see the advertiser and some chick a day, and.
Is there a deadline, Noah, on that?
We don't have to, I don't have, we have a security check, we have to decide what day or what time, or, but she's ready to go on the packets if we have time, if you want to send them out or advertise.
Okay.
There's been a couple people question, um, that they think the counties is better and wondering about a city-county merge, and I don't know.
Well. We know who the agent is for the county, and, um, and then Beth has talked to, you know, trying to compare city to county, and we've done some conversations on that, um, 'cause I've heard that same, you know, conversation with people, and there's a couple things come into play there, but, you know. But we do know, and, you know, if we, that guy is local, and he could bid this out if we put it out, you know, I don't know, yeah, so.
I love to get bids from several people, I think, from the agents, but, um, and I think they're wanting to make a presentation to, to the, uh, insurance committee so that they can ask questions and they can explain their products.
Yeah.
You're comparing apples to apples, so you know that everybody's in the same playing field and what they're.
That's the one concern, real concern I got last time when I came into office, that they get, the, agents didn't get a chance to explain their stuff on their quotes, and, um, I told them, we'd, you know, next time, we'd try to see what we can do there, and give them the opportunity to explain their quotes and explain their product.
And ask questions.
Yeah.
From the committee, so that.
Yeah.
They know what.
They're getting, we're, you know, we've heard from some people, but, you know, I, I don't know, we'll, we'll see, we're gonna try, and I, I can't guarantee we're gonna get what the county's got, or better than the county's got, I, but we're gonna try to see what we can do.
Has, has anybody told you what is better about the county's post, that, as opposed to the cities?
Uh, yes, a little bit, but I need to reach back out to a couple of them.
Yeah.
I could tell you something, Beth, I mean, I, you know, my wife started working there, so. There's quite a few on reimbursements, it's a little bit.
Reimbursements?
Yeah.
Is the, uh.
But the network seems to be similar, but I can, I can.
The maximum out of pocket.
I could feed you, I could feed you some of that information.
And all of their lab work's free at the, at the hospital.
We've kind of found out about that, yeah. Yeah, they have agreement with, you know, the hospital ha, and the county has an agreement.
I just wonder if that plan got bigger, too, a hundred and fifty more employees.
Yeah, I don't know what their number.
If the rates would come down, 'cause normally there's power and.
Mm-hmm.
Sometimes if, you know, if our claims are high, that may hurt them.
Or they, vice versa.
Vice versa, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's just, it's all the same, but.
It's.
It'd be nice to be able to go to, but, I don't know, one of us may hurt each other.
Right. So, yeah, we're gonna look at, try to look at a lot of avenues and see where we can go.
That's all I got.
All right, thanks. Beth, you got anything for us?
No, I think I can't.
Okay, anybody else got anything for last call? All right, now here, none of this means adjourned. Build it funded works in five minutes. Board of Public Works in five minutes. Let's call the meeting in order, please, uh, Board of Public Works and Safety, January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. First thing we have is approval of the minutes of the January ninth, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting in front of you tonight.
I move we approve those.
Okay, Councilor Dahl makes a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Councilor Nash, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, thank you. Next we have, um, the claims that's been submitted, discussion and approval of claims submitted tonight.
I'll move we approve the claims.
Okay, Councilor Nash makes a motion to approve the claims, as written, and Councilor Dahl, seconds, all in favor, sign.
Aye.
Opposed. Next, we have discussion of rare bids that were received on the demolition and removal of all structures located at one nine thirteen East Main Street in Washington and the second one, ten eleven West Van Tree Street in Washington, Indiana. Uh, we, we took those, um, bids and, uh, building commissioner John Casper took them and looked at them and, um, returned them back. And, um, nine thirteen East Main Street, um, John, you wanna tell us through your, I mean, Doug, yeah, Doug Gress, he, he is, on that one, Doug Gress, he asked for us to consider for ninety-four hundred dollars instead of the little bit of eighty-four seventy-five for R and S. And he, because, John?
Uh, yeah, R and S is just a new bidder, uh, to the city, um, with the proximity uh, to the location of the house next door to the west and the, and the small lot, um. We just felt more comfortable on that one at this time to, um, go with the next bidder whom has done, uh, jobs that are quite large, two-story building, um, at this time. That was the choice we went with on that.
And then for that, uh, reason only. But on the other hand, on the West Van Trees property, uh, R and S was a little bitter on that and he, um, wants to award that bid to R and S on the ten, ten eleven West, uh, Van Trees.
So it comes down to you're concerned about their experience with, uh, protecting a structure that close to, you know, structure taken down?
Essentially for that.
Okay.
And, and just as they're just a new, new bidder, first time bidder. Um, you know, and that's why we went ahead and awarded the, or want to award the other one um, to try to get your feet wet, get your foot in the door and, and look for them to be, uh, a better continually, uh, from here on out.
I move we accept his recommendations.
Okay.
I'll second.
That'd be Doug Gress on nine thirteen East Main for ninety-four hundred dollars. And, um, Councilor Dahl makes a motion to approve that, um, bid and Councilor Nash, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and then on ten, uh, ten eleven West Van Trees, we had, um, six bids and a little bidder was R and S Escavating for thirty-nine seventy-five. He wishes to award that to R and S.
I'll move we approve that one.
Okay, Councilor Nash makes a motion to approve the, the bid and, uh, Councilor Dahl, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. All right, and then, uh, next we have, um, discussion approval in our local agreement with the Davis County Commissioners and the, um, Davis County Economic Development Foundation to split costs for improvement services on both the upper and lower four-H parking lots in Washington. And I brought this in front of you because they asked, and I wa, I wish Bryant stayed, 'cause he was part of the conversation, but we had a conversation with, um, Bryant, with EDC, um, Nathan Gabhart with the county and myself before they did this project, um, wanted to know if they was gonna, the county's got their own equipment and their own asphalt machine, and they was wanting to do this product, uh, uh, project, wanted to know if we would be willing to split three ways with them on the cost. And we had a verbal at that meeting and we said, yeah, we should be able to work something out and do that, well. It came in a little higher than what I expected, it came in a hundred twenty thousand, so it would be forty thousand per person. The job has been done, it was done when this agreement came back to me from Grant Swart and Travers to both, all three parties. And, um, we thought, you know, originally I thought it was gonna be a little lower than that, it, it was higher altogether because they talking about their equipment personnel, but they wasn't trying to get that split. But, you know, it ended up being one twenty for two parking lots, one in front of the four-H building, one over there by the horse arena. And, uh, since that time and we was working on the parking lots and stuff, um, there, I don't know, a lot occurred up there when they doing it, but we had to, they had to redo the base up there and we got, they got the base done and then they got the parking lots paved. We did have a verbal between the three parties, I thought it was just a little higher than what I expected, but, um, EDC is gonna approve it, the county's okay with it, they's asking us if, to, um, ho, honor the verbal we had with them for forty thousand dollars, which would, I would use all my added money to pay for it. Four-H is a good, um, you know, organization, we, you know, I, we try to help them if we can and, uh, on the parking lots, they was, you know.
Well, we use it too for city functions.
And we're gonna be able to use it for city functions and, um, of course, um, they're getting ready to tear that other building down and rebuild, but we'll have that at our, uh, disposal to, to use too, but, um. Yeah, so I brought it to you guys just to, 'cause I like to, but these agreements bring to the council and, uh, the board of public works and, um, explain it to you, I mean, I was kinda, but it was, you know, after the fact. So I was, but I think it's good, I just, it was just a little higher than what I expected. But I think it was, it turned out good and it's nice up there and.
So they repaved the one on the west side of the four-H building then too?
The one on the west, out front there, it's a pretty good sized parking lot, that one, and then they went over to the horse arena and that never had parking over there, I'd be grass, but they made a parking lot, made it quite big there, there too, also paved the entryways, they went into that facility back there. And, um, you know, we can use it for any of our events, there's no problem there, so. It was just, I think it's a good project to do with them, it just, it was caused us a little bit by surprise.
Did they paint it too, paint parking?
They haven't striped it yet, I'm not sure if their plans are to stripe it or not, but. So I was asking you guys for your approval to.
Uh, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Enter into this agreement, Councilor Nash makes a motion to enter into the city local agreement, Councilor Dahl, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, thank you.
Is that the original?
No. We don't have the original.
Uh, I got a copy. I got a copy. Um. Mm-hmm. This is not it, this is all the other stuff. I can probably, as soon as I can probably get one, right, I could probably go in and get one. As soon as this means over, I can get one, so we can sign it.
Okay.
Okay. Um, next we got discussion approval to annual rate contracts with the raider, um, septic service and, um, quest liner, the both are, normally we sign these contracts. Will you find one?
Yes.
Okay, very good, normally we sign these contracts in December. Um, they expired, but I, the reason with the everything going on with the possible, we found out we really can't raise the rate right now on that, uh, discharge. Uh, we need to get the contracts out to the both of those participants, 'cause it will, th- they're still using us, we just don't have a contract with them right now. But we're still doing service with them. And it, it, they, they always paid the right amount, the twelve cents, twelve cents and the eighty-four cents on ammonia. So.
Basically it's a renewal of existing.
Basically renewal, we got, we need to get it out to them. We haven't sent it to them, but I've. Okay, Councilor Dahl makes a motion to approve both these, uh, agreements with these, um, two, um, for these rate contracts.
I'll second.
Councilor Nash, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And that's all we got on the agenda tonight for the board of works. Um, anybody in the crowd got anything for the board of works tonight? Hearing none. Uh, Nita, you got anything else for us?
Um, I just want about the police department, how, how are you with the confused or whatever?
Uh, we have the rule on new mom, just waiting here with the state. Hopefully, here's our police.
Yeah, we sent the paperwork, we signed it and sent it to Perf, waiting on their response. Sometimes it takes a little time, but we're hoping to hear back soon. That'll get them pretty close to back where they would need to be.
Do you have anything?
Okay, Tim, you got anything for the board of works?
No, I don't.
Beth, you got anything for us? Okay, hearing nothing, this means adjourned.